Okay. Morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is a hybrid. We've got people present and as well as people that are here virtually. Unfortunately Duncan is absent today. So the first order of business is disclosure of pecuniary interests and general nature thereof. Seeing none in the minutes from June 23rd, was there any airs or omissions? Could I have a mover and second for the minutes, please? Ketchabah, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One thing that's not on the agenda, this is a special day for our CIO Julie Gagnon, her birthday, so happy birthday to Julie. There is a change on the closed session. Item number three will be deferred to August. Because Duncan or Deputy Warden McPhail is not here today and I think it's appropriate that everybody hears before we do that review. So I need a move, motion to move in the committee of the whole. Jones and Marks, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the Wardens' Activity Report. It's always been busy, a lot of it's been virtual. But I think the real thing to emphasize is the conclusion. Where our Ontario commuters are facing unprecedented challenges as a result of COVID-19. Elgin County Council and public servants have played a key role responding to the crisis. Managing in difficult times and will focus on continued leadership to restore the economic activity prosperity when the crisis ends. Our collective focus is now shifting to recovery. And we will work with the community and regional partners and our community residents and businesses every step of the way. So any questions on the Wardens' Activity Report? Motion to receive and file. Martin? Ketchabah, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Next, we have a SWIFT report. Julie, is there anything you want to emphasize on the SWIFT report?
The recommendation is to receive and file and it's really an overview of the activities and the motion passed by Western Wardens on July 2nd. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from counsel on the SWIFT report? We are moving ahead, that's the important thing. So we're in second to receive and file, please. Marks, did you have a question, Tom, or just a mover?
Happy to move.
Moved by Marks, second by Jones, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
The next one is a sad report for myself, for the Wardens' Golf Tournament because of COVID-19, unfortunately. It's a very social event and we see people you usually only see once a year and often there's hugs and handshakes, well, we can't do that. Nor have a dinner as well, so unfortunately, it's going to be canceled this year. But the ongoing need with the United Way is still there. And certainly, we've always raised in that $25,000, $29,000 every year on the Wardens' Golf Tournament. And I would encourage those who have put their names forward or intend to put their names forward for the golf tournament or sponsorship to take that money and then pass it on to United Way, because the need is still there. And they're usually serving the most vulnerable in our community. And I will lead by example, our $500 that are already put down for the Wardens' Golf Tournament. I will in turn be sending that to United Way this week, so I would also encourage everyone else to do so. And hopefully in 2021, we can have a Wardens' Golf Tournament again. Questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. No, I think that's great. Yes, I agree. Anybody can afford to put the money forward if you're a sponsor. I encourage those people to do so still. It's definitely, United Way needs the money more so than ever and I think that'd be a really great thing to do.
Thanks, Grant. Any other questions on the golf tournament? Motion to receive and file? Jones? Ketchabah, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Ed, you're doing the next one on the grants?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. As the title or subject of the report is, it's the final recommendation for the 2020 Grant and Festival Events Partnership Program allocations. If you peruse the report, you'll notice summary of council-approved allocations to date. We, the committee has met again, several times actually, and has come up with two more recommendations for council to fund, including the STEAM Center for Association for $2,000. All other events have either been canceled or their applications have been withdrawn. That leaves a bit of a surplus left in the grant program, but that is something that council can decide on what they wish to do with it towards the end of the year. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, but the recommendation, of course, is to fund these two outstanding applicants. And with that, if there aren't any questions, I'd be happy to move the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Questions for Ed on the grant program?
Happy to sit.
Seeing none, we've moved by Ketchabah, second by Martin, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
And Ed, on the rural initiatives?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Warden. This report deals with revision of the festivals and grants, events, grant program. The attempt is, I should back up a little bit. The Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee were tasked with reviewing the grant programs, the various grant programs that the county offers, trying to bring them all under one umbrella. Staff have done a remarkable job of assisting us and developing these packages. They're attached, rather lengthy read, but I think all-encompassing. The intention is to perhaps provide a little more clarity and do the grant program. Some highlights would include that what we're proposing is that the festivals, events, the community services would all fall under the umbrella that the council would fund up to 50% of the eligible costs to a maximum of $10,000. And included also within the realm of council discretion would be the Community Signage Program as well. With the assistance of staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ed. Questions for Ed on the rural initiatives?
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead.
Mr. Warden?
Mary?
It's Counselor French. Could I make a comment, please?
Certainly.
First of all, I'd like to commend everyone for all their hard work on this report. It certainly looks like it took quite a bit of work and quite a bit of time. There's only a couple of things that I noticed with it. It seems a bit onerous. There seem to be a lot of questions and there's a lot of criteria that people have to, you know, wade through to even apply. I thought as a council, we were trying to streamline processes and make things a little bit more user-friendly. Although I understand we have to be cautious how we approach these items, after all, we are playing around with taxpayers' money. I don't even know if it's time we should not even do the grant business anymore. It's a costly thing. We're trying to watch our budget. And when it gets this onerous, it's certainly not user-friendly and we have a lot of organizations, they come forward for just small amounts. And so if they were coming in for, you know, $1,000 or whatever that they need for their festivals or whatever, would they really want to put the time and effort? I went through all the questions and it would take a significant amount of time and effort to apply for the grant. You don't know if you're going to get it anyway and I don't know, maybe it would turn people off. That's just my take on it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Go ahead, and I was going to respond, but go ahead, Grant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess I have similar concerns to Counselor French. I think originally the grant program was for small town fairs and small festivals throughout our communities. And at some point, it started to spread further afield. I know looking from the people in Southold that apply, I would agree, it seemed daunting to them, I believe would be a good term. And I feel that maybe someone would just give up and not do it. And I hate to see our small rural fairs disappear or not apply because they just don't want the challenge of applying. I think all the small festivals and fairs should have a fair shot at it, but if you don't have somebody with the savvy to go in and fill out the forms, I know some committees probably don't have a person to be interested in doing that. Maybe they'd be coming to council and asking for staff support at the municipal level, but that is my concern as well.
Tom?
I struggled with it when I read it because I did not want to appear negative, but I I wonder why, if something is good enough year after year, it should be a line item in the budget, be reviewed as all other things. But I question why we're in the grant business. Central Elgin, we tried years ago and we almost got out of it, but it keeps being rekindled every once in a while. You know, there's 33, 35 pages in there. Wow, what are we doing? It is complicated. This should not be complicated. We'll talk later about some improvements and the things at Terrace Lodge. $750,000 would likely be an item of discussion. We buy trucks, garbage trucks, gravel trucks, et cetera, $400,000, $600,000. Sometimes you don't even get a comment. And look at the time we're doing on this already, so tongue-in-cheek, I just wonder why we're in the grant business.
Ed?
Okay. Thank you all for your comments on that and I certainly appreciate it. To go towards the the application and the questions that are involved, I think the intention is to spare it out as much information as possible, but yes, it does appear a little onerous. I wouldn't guarantee that applicants are going to answer all those questions. And I would suggest that if you look at the criteria that are talking about providing verbiage of up to 200 words, that doesn't mean you're going to provide 200 words per question. But to be responsible to the ratepayer, I guess you'd say that you'd want to make sure that you are sending the, you are allocating any dollars to those who truly are in need of it. The idea of limiting the amount per applicant was such that you could spread this grant of money across more opportunities. The intention, I believe, the committee is trying to communicate is to encourage new applicants or innovative ideas or not just remain funding the same old and same old time and time again. But I think the valid question that I'm hearing is, does council want to continue within the grant program itself? And that's something that perhaps we need to have a broader discussion on in the future. The 2020 program is already underway this year. If you wish to proceed with a program for 2021, that's the reason why the policy is before you today, so that staff can have opportunity to plan to launch it in September. Whatever council wishes, of course, it's your program.
So?
I feel very strongly about grants and that we should be continuing to provide grants because it's, some of these groups and some of these organizations, excluding the fall, the fairs, et cetera, would not be happening without some assistance. And I think that's one of the great things the county does is assist in these things that help. One of the, one of the things is it helps people in the community. It's geared to help people in Elgin County and to support Elgin County. And I think it's a great way to assist with these people. We tried to stream it into three different streams so that it was someone who was doing, the cultivate is for people who have been doing things for quite a while and maybe encouraging them to increase or try something new in their activity or just enhance their activity in some way. We changed it from grow to cultivate because grow to me indicated more numbers and we weren't looking for that necessarily, just the ways to enhance it. The seed one is to give people who've never had a grant and want to try something new a chance to do that. And that was why we did that. The signage program has been a separate thing that we've done for a long time to assist with not-for-profit groups to advertise their museums or whatever, the different things that are on. And so I personally think this is great. I realize it's a bit of an onerous thing. Previously, it was a bit of an onerous thing. I don't think that's changed. I just believe that if people really want the grant or really need the grant, and I know there are groups out there that have said, if you cut the grant, we're done. So I, Tom and I are on different sides that way. I'd like to see Central Elgin reinstate the grants because I think they're important, but and it was never very much money. This one, we've agreed on the amount per person or per taxpayer in the county. And I think, to me, it's a great program.
Okay, thanks, Tally. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Warden, that's done.
Dominique?
Yes.
Dominique?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just a few additional comments. I think from the packages, I think it looks more onerous right now because it's all in one package. I think the intent will be that, for example, on the website, you pick your stream and then you get fewer pages. You don't get the entire program. And I think there's still some room to polish before it goes live. Where I think the intent was to go back and polish further because there are a couple of questions that are being repeated. And so I think there will be some improvement and so that it's not too onerous. The committee did, I think we did talk about the issue of grants and relying for organization to continuously rely on the county for their event, that maybe that was not the business we should be in. Certainly, what I like here and what we're trying to do is to shift and align this more with our strategic plan and with an economic development lens, where we're saying that it's not a grant necessarily that you ought to depend on. This is because we believe your event stimulates, you know, economic development, attracts people to come here, perhaps live here. It's a quality of life, which is something, like I said, that is aligned with our strategic plan and we want to support that. And that's why we're shifting the criteria to, but you've got to be active, you've got to be doing something. Even if you've been running the same fair for the last, you know, X number of years, what new features are you going to try this year? And this is what we're funding. So to me, it's less of a grant and more of that support from, to boost, including a separate stream for a new event to stimulate more ideas. So I think that's worth a try because I'm also on the fence in terms of the pure grant program. And I think it is the intent of the committee to also seek feedback, since this will be a new stream, a new form, a new criteria, that once we go through one year, to seek feedback from the applicants to find out if indeed we can improve the process further. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dominique. Any other comments?
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I'm not against what we're trying to do here. I think it's a good concept. I think it's just when you see some of the fall fairs, like Shedd, it's been in existence well over 100 years and the tiny group that they pull together each year to run the fair, that's where I see a concern. And when you start talking about what are they going to do new next year, the fall fair is a fall fair. It doesn't change much from year to year and probably hasn't over the past 100 years either because it's what the local residents expect. And when you look at, is it going to bring in more people? Well, it'll bring in some of the kids from that moved out of the area and come back for the weekend to catch up on old acquaintances, but it's more about culture than anything and the culture of Elgin County and our municipalities. And I think that's got to be weighed in there as well, not just what the deliverables are. And I think that's what I'm seeing that's missing here. And if they have to have help, I'll help them, but fill it out. But if you can streamline a bit more, especially for these small organizations that try and keep the boat afloat every year, it's a struggle. I hate to see them disappear.
Okay, thank you, Grant. Any other comments? My own personal, I agree with Tally. I think we need to support our cultural events through Elgin County and encourage them. I also have strong feelings that we may have gone overboard on the application. If you're applying for $200 or $13,000, there's a, if you're applying for $13,000, you can put a bit of time in. If it's applying for $200, it's a little onerous. But I suggest that we leave the format for 2021 and monitor it. And if there's issues, we can always revise it, but I'm suggesting that for 2021, we leave it as is and see how we come out and see what the, those who are applying and obviously if half of them are gone next year, then we know we've gone, we need to revise it. Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wanted to clarify in your comments, when you're talking about leaving the format for 2021, are we talking about try the new policy process or leave it as the 2020 program?
Well, there's new, there's new policy.
Thank you.
And I know what the intent of the committee is to encourage not only those who are existing, but new people to come on board. And we'll see how we make out with it. And as I said, if we get a lot of kickback, then we may have to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, we need to simplify it.
I think that, Mr. Warden, was always the intention, as Dominique had mentioned before, that to go through a bit of a post-mortem, shall we say, after a trial run on this program and see how it works. Again, it's up to council to decide whether they wish to take that leap of faith or not.
Okay. Well, I suggest we take the leap of faith and then we'll see where it goes. So a mover and second for the grant program? Jones?
I can.
Ketchabah?
Even though it's my report.
All in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
No.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion is carried.
Six two.
Oh, six two, yes. Six two, my apologies. Motion is carried.
Thank you. Dominique, you're doing the Terrace Lodge?
Yes, I am. Just a brief update for the fundraising committee. As council may be aware, we had sent out a letter what feels like a long, long time ago to recruit additional community members. We have received three applications. We're very pleased to consider these three applicants, so two from Malahide and one from Almer. And so the rest of the report, I think, pretty straightforward. I'll still put a plug in that there's still more room on the committee or we would love representation from across the county. So if you have people in your community that, as you know, sometimes people just need a little nudge and a personal phone call or something like that, so we encourage you to do that in your community. We still have time. We are still trying to align with the construction and coordinate. So we'll probably be looking at delaying the fundraising campaign kickoff until the spring. So you still have time to nudge a few people in your community, but for now, the recommendation is to welcome these three applicants.
Thank you, Dominique. Questions for Dominique on the Terrace Lodge fundraising? There is a recommendation with three names put forward, so mover and second for those?
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, second by Jones, in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jagger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Now, will, will staff be notifying these individuals that they're now on the committee? Okay, good. Okay, Bob, you're doing the Terrace Lodge redevelopment update?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the time. We did send out this report to everybody ahead of time, so I'm just going to summarize a few things. But the bottom line is, we're going to be coming to you in the August meeting with some firmer numbers. These numbers are pretty accurate, but we want to firm them up and we'd want to press the province to see how much they're going to help us out with this. So it won't be till August that we come back to you, but we didn't want to wait that long. We have tried to get a real good handle on the impact of COVID-19 on this project. And as you know, it's a major project. We may be coming back asking to add $1.1 million to the budget. And I'll explain that in detail. And there's one major part of that. I would like to have a bit of a discussion at County Council today to get some direction for our committee. Basically, where that breaks down is we have identified $225,000, that is burnt costs, as a direct result of COVID-19. A result of having to change how we're going to build the building so that we don't have any exposure to our staff or our residents during the initial construction. We're going to try and build it and then attach it later. That's a bit of a cumbersome way. The long and the short of it, it adds three to four months to the project. It adds cost to the project and we've identified that in the neighborhood of $225,000. There may be some hope for recovery if the province and the federal government come up with some sort of funding for COVID impacts, but we're not going to hold our breath. That's burnt costs and we're going to be adding that to our budget. We had, we also asked our staff and Michelle and Jim did a marvelous job on finding sensible solutions for things longer term because of COVID. One was creating negative pressure rooms, which are really important not only for COVID, but if you have any other infectious disease that has any semblance of airborne qualities. When we initially looked at this, we could have sped up to about $400,000 on creating negative pressure rooms. But they found a solution where we'll be putting in some venting systems that we'll be able to turn any one of these new rooms into a negative pressure room on a temporary basis. And that's going to have virtually no impact on our budget, so that's a fabulous solution for that. Also makes it flexible. We won't have to move people around to find a room. We'll be able to isolate their rooms and then we'll Next one was having oxygen readily available. And this is important for other reasons other than COVID-19, but it brought it, it heightened it for us. If we were going to try to turn each one of our rooms into like a hospital room with piped in piped in oxygen, we're looking for $400,000, $500,000 again. But for $100,000, we can reconfigure some of our storage areas and have portable oxygen on site, which we can quickly retrieve if we need it and use that. So we will be coming back with that recommendation to add that to the budget. Another modest amount is $10,000 to increase the locker areas and as far as staff, so that they're not climbing all over each other, particularly when we have an infectious breakout. So those things are things we will be coming back in August and adding to the budget. And if you add them up quickly, you're looking at the neighborhood of $350,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, which is like 1% of our total budget. So we'll be coming back with that. The big one that we want to talk to you about is the enlarging of the dining room area. If we enlarge the dining room so that you can easily do your six-foot distancing and things like that, we're looking at a price tag of around $750,000, which is huge and significant. That's where we'd like some direction from County Council. This won't be mandatory. We have verified that with the province, but we can go ahead with our plans without doing that. But now's the time to talk about it while it's still on paper before we get into the construction or too far down the road. What we're doing is we've reached out to the ministries. We're trying to get them to contribute their fair share to this increase if they want to do it right now. And we don't have a firm answer from them. It was late as 3 o'clock yesterday, we were talking to them. They say they're going to work with us. I've heard those types of phrases before. I have no clue what that means, but there's some hope. At least we're still talking and we'll continue to keep talking with them. And what we'd like is if county council don't want us down that route and aren't interested in placing this money into our budget in August, then just tell us right now and we will beat ourselves up or beat up the contractors or the team that's working on it or the ministry people. But the other stuff, we will be coming back to you. And the reason we're presenting it this way is our committee, because we're firming up pricing and we got a lot of working pieces that we're making happen before our next committee meeting, it happens right after our next council meeting. Therefore, you won't get the recommendation till August. So we didn't want to wait that long. We wanted to put this on the table and let you know about it. So I'm happy to move my report. And if we get a seconder before we do any vote, I would like to have a thorough direction from County Council about the $750,000 piece.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Grant?
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Through you to Bob. With regards, I totally agree with the oxygen and the negative pressure rooms, the seniors homeless being built beside Elgin Manor right now. We just had a delegation last night and they were very fortunate that the owner of the property is a construction engineer. So that has been quickly incorporated into several of the rooms, negative pressure and all that good stuff. So very fortunate that way that they're able to do it in such a quick turnaround. With regards to the $750,000 for the dining room, so I guess my question is, what's the alternative if we go through another pandemic? What's, has there been any analysis on costs? I assume that some people have to eat in the rooms instead of going to the dining facility. Has there been any analysis on how much that costs in staff time to, or how does that work exactly if you don't have the social distancing?
Bob, if you?
Hey, Bob. Yeah, I'll jump in and then I'm going to toss it to Michelle when I kind of finish the comment. But basically, if we do not expand the dining rooms, we would have to do what we're doing currently in our homes. And there is extra cost involved with that. And it is also somewhat problematic to try to do people in shifts and try to do people in different locations and that. And I'll let Michelle just add any additional. We are tracking those extra costs. Jim's tracking them for COVID recovery so that we know what that is. But I'll let Michelle basically talk about what we would have to do if we don't expand this dining room.
Great, Michelle.
Thanks, Mr. Warden and Counselor Purcell. Great question, Counselor Jones. So during the pandemic, at present, our current requirements of social distancing are that six feet. So we're not able to use our current dining room, and so our residents are all eating in the resident home areas. We have residents set up with tables in the lounges and in the hallways and in their resident rooms. And we try to rotate those people through each of those locations so they're not always in their room, we're always in the hallway. So we are using, we're so thankful for our redeployed staff. They're providing great assistance at mealtime for all three of our meals, as well as our recreation staff, and we're bringing in extra nursing staff. So we are, as Counselor Purcell mentioned, tracking those costs. And Jim Bunchu is, probably has that information at his fingertips for you. However, it's unclear how long that requirement will be in place. So we heard yesterday Minister Elliott mentioned and Doug Premier Ford that we're moving into phase three, but that social distancing requirement will be in place until there's a vaccine in place. So it's unclear to us if during our project, each of the phases and/or at the end of our project, whether these social distancing requirements will still be in place. If they are, the current design as it is now will not allow us to have the 25 residents in the RHA dining rooms. It will allow for 14 maximum, probably 13 would be the optimum number. And so we will have to utilize the activity room, which is in fairly close proximity, which will only hold three to four additional residents. And then at the far end of each RHA, we will have to have the other remaining residents. So that again puts us in the same position of increased operational costs, which currently we are. But on that will continue is unknown. So if we are in that same position or if we have another pandemic, once we get into our redeveloped home, we'll have those same operational costs and the challenges of monitoring and supervising and assisting residents with meals. So we'll have to bring in staff, potentially dietary staff, or potentially a different category to assist with mealtime. And that would be for each of the four resident home areas. So it's, there's all that uncertainty. We don't know what it looked like. It was important to have these conversations now and make sure everyone had a clear understanding of what our current picture is and what the potential picture is moving forward. Certainly, this is a conversation that is happening at many capital development, long-term care home meetings, including Advantage Ontario, the meetings that I sit at with that. So we did take some initiative and set up a T-con with the ministry. We had that last week. Jim Bunchu, myself and Gail and David Hines from MMMC were present, and we had the opportunity to share the items that we're considering and have some conversation to try and understand, is the ministry looking at the design manual? Are they anticipating some changes? And they recognize and understand why we're looking at these items, but they weren't able to give us any clear direction as to whether these design changes will be coming down the pipe soon or at all. But they were very interested in understanding what the cost would be for dining room changes as well as what would be the latest timeframe for us to be able to make some changes once the project was starting. So it was a good conversation. As Counselor Purcell mentioned, it provided a bit of hope, but also uncertainty. So that's the biggest piece that we still have to come to some sort of decision on. And I look to council because we staff do recognize this is a significant ask that council may not find affordable. So hopefully, I've answered your question, but if you have additional, I'm happy to respond to those as well.
Thanks, Michelle. And when we are doing our initial estimate, and this is in January, this is prior to COVID-19, and no one could have predicted how economically that was going to affect this project. We have to think of our, the safety of our residents and on the comfort level of our residents at the same time. So I think we really need to strongly consider the enlargements of the dining room. I've got Grant first in time.
Could I have a supplemental, please? Michelle, so God forbid we have another pandemic. I hope that doesn't happen in my lifetime. So if we do go ahead with this expansion of the dining rooms, obviously, there's going to be a lot of extra space that won't be used majority of the time. Do you have plans to utilize that space? Obviously, if you spread people out six feet apart, there's going to be a lot of extra room in those rooms, in the dining rooms.
So that's a great question. So the suggested or recommended changes from MMMC would be taking the two bedrooms that are directly across from the current resident home area dining room. So that's again 13 or 14 residents in the planned dining room and the remainder right across the hall. So it'd be quite manageable. And then the two, relocating two bedrooms to the other end of the hall. If we, if we don't do this recommended change, there could potentially be an impact to quality of life of residents because we'll be utilizing their lounge area and their activity areas for dining with either setting up and taking down tables three times a day or leaving them in place. So it impacts their space. Adding this additional dining space and then potentially not requiring it, it just adds an additional area for residents and families to spend some quality time and do some programming. It's a, it's very tough decision and pros and cons to both situations. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. Tom?
As a member of this committee, I read this report several times with interest. I appreciate Chairman Bob. He operates with a sharp pencil, and I appreciate that very much and agree with it. There's a lot of logic in the report. The one thing I think is lacking, Michelle has given us a lot of information and I appreciate that. But I do recognize $750,000 over 40, 50 years really isn't a lot of money. You know, so one thing, Michelle, you haven't done is, I don't want to put you on the spot, it was your decision to make. Because I value that because you're the educated person. I'm sitting here as a committee member, interested and concerned, et cetera, et cetera. But you're the one with the knowledge and I do value that. So I appreciate, if you were given the opportunity to make the decision, what would it be?
Well, you are putting me in the hot seat because I do recognize that it is a significant cost and a significant ask, especially at a time where there's so many financial and economic pressures. So, but my answer would be I would definitely move forward with it and hopefully that's an okay answer. But I did have a conversation with Gail Kaufman-Carlin following our meeting with MMMC and just wanted her honest opinion. Should we be pushed forward and requestless? And she felt it was the appropriate thing to do as well. But I totally respect and value every member of council and their, their questions around this because it is uncertain. We don't know what the future holds for us in regards to social distancing. It may not even be a need by the time we do finish our project. So it's, there's so much uncertainty, but if I had the money, I would hand it over and say, yes, this is important to do.
Sally?
Yes, Michelle, you had mentioned that probably Jim Bunchu had the figures at his fingertips about how much extra cost it's been costing to feed people the current way that we're doing it. So maybe Jim could just give us an idea because that would help us understand how much it's going to cost if we don't do this.
Sure, I can do that. We're looking at approximately $10,000 a month. Now, the question is, is that how many months are we talking about? As Michelle said, we may be out of this by the time the construction's done. There'll be other types of infections that we perhaps have a need to be socially distancing on. I don't know, how many months a year are we talking about? On the flip side, all those months where we're not in pandemic, when you have a larger building, that's a larger area to heat, larger area to maintain. The staff, when they're running from one end of the RHA to the other, it's not much more of a larger area, which takes away staff time. And so that's a counterargument to adding space because when it gets too large, it becomes difficult to manage. I think what we can say with certainty is that there'll be more months where we're not in a pandemic type situation where we're socially distancing than the other way. But the cost, obviously, the incremental cost for heating and lockdown will be much less than the $10,000. When, so, so you're saving a small amount on very many months when you're not in pandemic, offset by the $10,000 a month for the more limited number of months when you are. My best guess is on a cost perspective, that would be a wash. And then what we're really talking about then is the cost, incremental cost of the $750. Operationally, I would say in the long term, the benefits are offset by the negatives over the longer term. And does council have $750,000 to put towards this? And it's not just a question purely of homes because you're looking at all the other service priority areas, right from transportation to, I mean, what we learned from the pandemic is the need for children to have internet at home so that they can do their schoolwork. And that's, I think, the considerations that company needs some of it.
Thank you, Jim. Did you have another question?
Something for the committee, something for the committee to consider and I'm just throwing it out there and not being on the committee, I don't have the answers. Is there a way of putting in walls that can be removed when they're needed to be removed? And otherwise, the walls being in place and for whatever storage or not just storage, but if there's some type of room that Michelle is missing from the equation that could be used for other purposes when we aren't in pandemic? Is that something that's been thought about?
Michelle or Bob?
Yeah, I could, I could jump in on that, yes. And that's, that's not hard to do, but we wanted to get the fundamental first of rather than not, you're even interested in this investment of this piece. The other items that I've outlined are definitely coming back to you. But that's something if council today says, yes, leave it in, then in August, we'll refine that kind of stuff and give you some better answers on exactly how it all would work.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other questions? Ed?
Just a comment and Mr. Warden, that if council decides to go down this route and fund the larger dining room, then you have two more facilities. Is this going to imply renovations at these others in the future? So we're looking at more cost down the road as well. So we don't know what the time horizon of this pandemic is. I agree. We don't know how long the added cost or how long the staff resources are going to withhold or maintain the current schedule. But I'm just concerned that we're going to have an investment here that we may not get full utility of during non-types pandemic. And then the added cost, if we do one here, we need to treat the others fairly similarly, I would think, from a principle point, something to consider.
And I agree with you, Ed. I understand that.
Mr. Warden? I can address that piece. We don't look at this as any kind of a precedent. If you look at what is happening at Terrace Lodge, we are currently, because we're in the position to do it catching up to what Elgin Manor and the Vobier already have, and the same thing will happen with them if they ever have a total rebuild or they do an upgrade, then these types of enhancements would be considered at that time. But we definitely don't look at this as what happens in Terrace Lodge has to happen in any of the other homes.
Mr. Warden?
Oh, go ahead, Dominique.
Thank you. The point I want to bring up is that throughout this whole discussion, we're making a full assumption that the two-meter rule is a done deal, and it's not. So I'm, as you may know, I'm associated with the medical organization, so I do receive a lot of a lot of, um, updated research. And as recent, recently as last week, um, there are several, uh, groups of scientists who are saying that the, the two meter rule is based on an old dichotomous model of droplets versus airborne. And so we're, we're using that model because we haven't had time and there's still a lot of research going on to try to figure out what is really at play here. So my biggest concern is that four weeks from now, we could determine that it's eight meters, it's not two meters. And so the two meter rule is an assumption and it could change any moment. It's very much, no pun intended, but it's very much in the air. So, um, to make that large of an investment, just to find out a month from now, six months from now, that maybe it should have been three meters, maybe it should be eight meters. And then where are we at? So, so to me, it's not even the money, it's the fact that it's too much of an unknown to be investing. And, and I, I think, I'd, I'd like to look at more creative solutions. Um, I mean, we've seen how some restaurants around the world have come up with different partitions, even on the table, that divide, um, and prevent droplets during a meal and, uh, and those kinds of solutions because a, a bricks and mortar solution for a science that's not determined, um, is, would not be a reasonable thing to do, in my opinion.
Thank you, Dominique. Any other questions for Bob? So Bob, do we need to make a decision whether we're going ahead with the enlarged, uh, dining room and then work on figures?
What, what I'm going to suggest, Mr. Warden, and then anybody on county council can stop me if they want to, but, uh, we're going to be coming back in August with the, uh, the big four, which is about 350,000. It's pure COVID and those are also solutions that work even if we have a flu infestation. Uh, so they're sensible changes to make. Um, but this 750, I'm going to suggest to our committee and, and others, that if we can't get commitment from the province for their fair share of this 750, um, that we'll probably talk about not bringing it back to you, to be honest with you. Um, but if we can get a commitment out of the province for their fair share, we'll bring it back to you and we'll have a discussion and county council can make the decision on the, on the budget in our August, on our August report, if that's fair.
So today's is just on the 350, is that what you're recommending?
Um, I'm not even recommending that today. I'm giving you a heads up that that will be there. We want to refine those numbers and make sure we're real comfortable with them. I don't think you're going to see them change a lot, but it could go 10% down or 10% up. Um, and I want to, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. I, I, in fairness, the committee hasn't had a chance to, uh, probe and ask all the questions and get all the details because, uh, we've been moving fairly quickly on this, even though the construction is going.
Okay, thank you, Bob. So today we'll just, uh, receive the report as an update. Is that fair?
Uh, that, that's, that's fair with me, what county council are understanding, um, what might be coming back to them and under what circumstances.
Okay, that's fair. Tom?
Before we leave it, and I did hear Michelle say, if she had her way, maybe I could leave this and challenge her mathematically justified. Like, my mom spent two years down Terrace Lodge and I can remember, you know, if I was there at lunch, 11:00, 11:30, everyone started the parade down towards, uh, elevator. There is an awful lot of wasted hours getting them down there. Some, you know, those, this may be very justifiable. I, I can't do that. And that's what I would challenge Michelle, if you, if you think, because those, those numbers would be very important to me anyway. I mean, I still have a very open mind on it, but.
In, in fairness, Mr. Warden, if I may jump in, um, we'll, we'll bring back those types of answers and have a conversation in August, if you don't mind. Um, just on the surface, if you listen to what Jim said and that, you've got a 10-year payback on this thing, at 10 grand a month and it's based on Washington, the extra costs and that. Uh, so you got a 10-year payback, uh, and, and it's paid for itself, just an extra cost. So, uh, even if it takes 20 or 25 years of spread that out, uh, because you're not using it all the time, uh, there, there, there is a payback, but it's, but it's not hard, it's not a big payback and it's not a quick payback. So we'll bring you back those types of numbers. That's why we need to do some work on the numbers and that before we make a recommendation. Is that fair?
That's good, Bob, thank you. Any other questions for the committee?
Uh, Mr. Warden, could I make a comment, please?
Go ahead, Mary.
I think unless you've worked in long-term care or any type of facility, you don't understand all the implications and Michelle will agree with this. It's not just about staff, it's not just about people that work in the, um, kitchen area that would help the residents, you know, with their meals and everything. What happens is everybody bands together, all staff, because the top priority is getting residents to, to the dining room to have their meals or we, you know, the person that's working has to take the meal to the residence room or wherever that resident is. I think the one thing we're missing here is when everybody's running around trying to get everyone fed, things happen. Um, it takes our staff away from other areas if we, if some of our residents are ill. Um, I've run into this problem because you're running around trying to tray, that's what we called it at the residence where I were, tray our residents. So we're running around, you know, going to rooms and other areas to take them their meals, but in the meanwhile, the phone's ringing off the wall because you have ill residents that need assistance immediately. And I find that sometimes it takes away key staff, like when they're helping with dining, the dining room, um, it takes them away from other areas. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is there's a liability here as well. We just have to keep that in mind. And I wouldn't mind hearing from Michelle, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I know we're fortunate right now to have other staff helping, but when those staff get called back to their regular jobs, then what are we supposed to do? I know we could hire more people, but I think I'm pretty sure the Terrace Lodge staff all band together at mealtimes. Am I wrong about that, Michelle?
No, you're bang on, Mary. Uh, so all departments are involved quite heavily at this time and, and we do count on those redeployed and other staff, uh, providing us assistance. Even managers are out there providing assistance because we're spread throughout the home. So it's, uh, you're, you're accurate in your statements.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Any other questions for the committee? Okay, I need a mover and second or just for the update that, uh, Bob has presented. I think you moved it, didn't you, Bob?
Yes, I did.
Seconded by Jones, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into staff reports. Michelle, you're doing the first one on the homes.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Before yours, a report on infection control policy, a draft policy coming to you on the guidelines for construction and renovations during a pandemic. Uh, as per the requirements under the Long-Term Care Home Act and Ontario Regulations, policies and procedures are required to be in place. Uh, the county homes certainly have implemented infection prevention and control measures at the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, and this included measures applicable to the repairs and maintenance of essential services and equipment within the home. So we weren't doing anything extra, but as the COVID-19 pandemic is ongoing and with the potential for a second or third wave, uh, it was imperative that I look at a policy outlining guidelines for construction and renovation projects during a pandemic, um, to support any delayed or scheduled and upcoming project work and certainly our redevelopment project as well. So through the research that I did and consultation with South Western Public Health and, and consulting with their Director of Engineering, a draft policy was developed, um, for implementation pending council approval and the council, the, uh, policy was attached for reference. Uh, the recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council approved the draft policy, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Questions for Michelle on the policy? Seeing none, mover and second. Dominique, did you have a question?
Yes, one question. Um, I think that under item three for the PPE, I was just curious, um, is it a full PPE or which items are to be worn at all time? And who provides it? The home or the contractor?
So, oops. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So that's a great question. Um, what our experience to date has been is that the contractors have been arriving with their own PPE. Um, and so it would depend on whether they're in the home, how much PPE and what PPE would be required or versus whether they were outside working. So, and then, uh, depending on their closeness to other trade workers or our staff, again, so there's variables with that, but that, those, um, indicators would be part of any of the links that you, uh, select in section five. Um, hopefully that answers your question. So there's some variable, uh, variability with that. Uh, currently when contractors are, are coming, we get good communication from the engineering department about where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing. Um, are they going to be in proximity of staff or residents so that we can provide that direction? Uh, but very, uh, I haven't had to provide any PPE when they've arrived, they've arrived with their PPE to date. And Brian, if you want to weigh in on that, I think that's been the direction to the contractors as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I wonder if it's necessary to, just in that bullet, to say, uh, PPE to be worn at all times, to be determined by the home, but to be provided by the contractor.
Certainly.
Something like that, so then it's clear.
Absolutely, I can make that amendment.
Any other questions, sir, Michelle? Seeing none, a mover and second for the report, please.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, seconded by Jones, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Al, you're doing the workforce recovery?
Uh, yes, Mr. Warden, uh, good morning.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, as part of the economic planning for post-COVID-19 requires the undertaking of initiatives that will, that will provide a greater understanding of employer workforce needs and skill gaps based on the demand and supply of labor. Uh, now I've been, I've agreed to participate on an advisory committee led by the Algen Middlesex Oxford Workforce Planning Development Board, which will address these labor market issues for the London Economic Region, which Algen County is a part of. Now, the first project the committee will be undertaking includes, uh, an employer needs assessment, which will be done by surveying businesses. This work will be undertaken by the Workforce Planning and Development Board. Funding for this project is through the Ontario Labor Market Partnership. The Ontario Labor Market Partnership is a funding program through the Ministry of Ontario, so, of the Ontario Minister of Labor, Training and Skills. This program provides assistance, financial assistance to local communities, sector groups, employee and employer associations, and employers in developing and implementing strategies for addressing and responding to local economic and development needs, labor force adjustments and human resource planning. I do want to stress that the Workforce Planning Development Board is aware that businesses have been surveyed a great deal over the past three months. There's a variety of surveys that were undertaken regionally. Therefore, the results of these various surveys will be reviewed to see if there were any relevant information that would negate them to survey the same businesses. You don't want to repeat, uh, the work that's already been done. Uh, now the Workforce Planning Board has been approved for this funding. Uh, we were notified just, uh, last week. The second project that the committee will be undertaking looks at how the supply and demand for labor in southwest Ontario may shift over the next 12 to 24 months. A survey will not be used, rather conversations with sector and business leaders will be undertaken. The Workforce Planning Development Board has applied for funding through the Ontario Minister of Labor Training and Skills. If approved, the project will start sometime in August. Again, the, the committee will look after this project. And, uh, that is the end of my presentation and there is a recommendation for council this morning, which is to receive and file a report for information. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Questions for Al, his report? Seeing none, a mover and second of receiving and file, please. Moved by Ketchba? Second by Martin? All in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're doing the, uh, Wonderland Road?
Yes, three miss, your warrant to council. Uh, the report before you, uh, details a list of reduced speed zone revisions, amendments rather, uh, required of the county's bylaw. Uh, it is proposed that two existing speed zones be reduced from 60 to 50 kilometers per hour in Shedd and Wallistown, a new 60-kilometer zone be introduced on Glen Colan Line in support of efforts undertaken by the town of Malahide. And an existing 60-kilometer per hour zone on Wonderland be eliminated. All is detailed in the report. It is, uh, recommended that the supporting reduced speed zone bylaw be amended to include these revisions. The recommendations are before you, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on the, uh, speed zones? Grant?
I'd be happy to move this before. I know the people in Shedd and, uh, a few a lot of people see that reduction. I know, uh, people look through Shedd and at a fairly substantial clip most of the time, so reducing it ten may help that situation.
Thanks, Grant. Any other questions? Seeing none, mover and second of Brian's report, please. Martin and Jones? Purcell, all in favor?
So that was Martin and Jones?
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Now, next one on the development charges. If you remember, last year we discussed the development charges and it was turned down. Uh, we, Brian has new information, but we need a motion to reconsider before Brian, we can take Brian's report. And that has to be passed by two-thirds, Julie?
Two-thirds majority though?
Two-thirds majority, so a mover and second to reconsider. Marks and Martin? All in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
No.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Seven one, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, development charges.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through the county council, I'll just share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Terrific. As identified in the 2020, uh, council's, uh, 2020 strategic plan, one of the action items, uh, was an objective to explore opportunities to facilitate and promote development. I present before your presentation on the implementation, potential implementation of development charges for council's consideration. Included in discussion, I will discuss each of the elements below, providing a bit of background, briefly talk about the Development Charges Act, services that could be considered, the overall process, a comparison of rates in other communities, next steps for council. Starting as a background, bit of background, the county currently does not have development charges, as council is well aware. Development charges are implemented through bylaws and are reevaluated every five years. Development charges are governed by the Development Charges Act. Both upper and lower tier municipalities can levy development charges. In 2014, Hampson Consulting Limited was retained by council to prepare a development charges background study, which was prepared before council, which was presented before council on May 12th, 2015, at which time then council chose not to proceed. Development charges are fees imposed on development to finance development-related capital costs to maintain service levels. The principal- to maintain service levels, the principal being growth, pays for growth, so that financial burden is not borne by existing taxpayers or jeopardizes sustainability of capital program. The distinction between development charges and property tax is such that development charges fund a share of capital cost of expanding municipal infrastructure to service new development, while ultimately funding the remaining balance, while property tax ultimately funds remaining balance and funds operating costs and long-term repair and replacement of municipal infrastructure. Development charges are most commonly collected at the time of building permit issuance or at the time of subdivision approval. County development charges would be collected at the municipality level. Development charge reserve accounts must be established on a service-by-service basis. The Development Charge Act does stipulate the following service exclusions, such as cultural and tourism facilities, parkland acquisition, waste incineration, just to name a few. The following is a list of development charge eligible services for consideration, of which it is important to note that services shared with the city of St. Thomas are eligible. The act does permit the following eligible costs: building and structure costs, development-related studies, interest and financing costs, once again, just to name a few. The county's development charge study findings as completed in 2015, based on then a $51.4 million capital program, proposed the following built form rates. And generally, as compared in the industry, when you're looking at a single and semi-detached home, the rate in 2015 was proposed to be $4,291. At this time, the following is a list of growth-related transportation projects required in support of pending development, generally consisting of turning lane improvements, signalization, whether it be a potential installation of roundabout in central Elgin, turning lane improvements in support of various developments in various municipalities, for a total capital cost of $5.45 million. The Development Charge Act includes the following land use exemptions: development associated with municipal buildings, minor residential expansions, industrial expansions up to 50%, once again, just to name a few. Development charge process starts with having to review the current development forecast, then leading to identification of growth-related capital costs. It takes into consideration the county's asset management plan, and ultimately will lead to the establishment of proposed rates for council's consideration. Some key council considerations include the following: showcasing the background study findings for a period of 60 days prior to the bylaw and following a public meeting. And council can adopt development charges at any level. The following is a list of Elgin member municipalities which currently have development charges in place and their associated values. Development charges in other counties, the following is a list of that, including their updated rates. With respect to some of the municipalities listed that don't currently have development charges, I would be speculating as to why they currently do not have at this time. And when you insert the consideration of the 2015 rate, you can see there that's where Elgin County would sit amongst its competitors. Finally, consideration next steps. The next steps for council's consideration and potentially implementing development charges would require council's direction to proceed with the preparation of a development charge background study. If the study proceeds, staff will need to prepare growth forecasts, compile historic inventories, and review its 10-year development charge capital plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Certainly, Malahide is, as you see, Malahide is as a development charge. I do believe growth should pay for growth. There's, but the argument against putting a development charge is that it discourages growth. And obviously, some of the ones that have the highest rate of development charges also have the greatest growth. So I don't think that that is accurate. Our service delivery review, if you remember, that's one of the things they pointed out, that if you're looking for a way of revenue going forward, that development charges could be possible. And I know that we are going to have an economic tsunami coming forward at both levels of government. They simply can't fund us the way they have in the past, so we need to look at other ways of alternative income, and certainly this is one. So certainly, I would be in support of going forward and doing the study. But I'll open it up to council. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know with Southold, we've had this debate a long time, and within the next month or so, we're going to have our final report from our consultants on our development charges. Growth has to pay for growth. With Southold, with the number of houses that we're going to see in the next four to five years, it could all put about 30 to 40% more population into Southold. And that's significant, and it has, the normal rate payer should not have to pay for that growth. So that's why Southold has gone the route of development charges. I think it's long overdue for Southold, should have happened a long time ago. With that growth in central Elgin, their next-door neighbor, they're seeing growth in the same area. St. Thomas is growing in the same area. We have to get a handle on this from the county as well, because there's going to be some serious transportation issues coming up, not just what's been identified here, but I think at some point, we're going to have to start looking at more stoplights and what have you. This is one way to mitigate some of that, that the growth is paying for it, not the general population of Elgin County.
Thanks, Grant. Sally?
Well, obviously, in central Elgin, we've been doing it as long as I've been on council. It's certainly been, there've been development charges, and I've been on for 14 years now. So I believe it's very important. I know in our developments, when we're developing areas in Port Stanley, it's affecting county roads. And that means all the taxpayers in the whole of Elgin County are helping to pay for the development in Port Stanley, and I think that's wrong. I agree that growth should pay for growth. And as you said, Mr. Warden, it's not discouraging growth that we have development charges. We're still getting incredible amount of growth. And I just think it's very important that we do this. You're limited in what you can spend it on. It has to be something that, a cost that was generated by the growth or by the development. And I think it's very, very important, and I think we should definitely be doing this as a way to supplement and not asking a taxpayer in West Elgin or Bayham to pay for something that happened in central Elgin.
Thank you, Sally. Any other questions or comments? Ed? Mr. Warden? Well, I've got Ed first and then you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question to staff. If I understand correctly, the study, the initial study needs to be done, and then every five years it needs to be redone, something like a water, wastewater study review. What's the cost of that study?
Through Mr. Warden, I would, I would estimate the cost of that, based on past experience, somewhere in the order of $25,000 to have a report of that caliber prepared.
The 2015 study was, was just under $30,000.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify that, certainly, the initial study is the most expensive one. After you're renewing this every five years, it's literally just looking at your development charges and seeing if they're, they're adequate or if they're appropriate. So going forward, it's not near as expensive as the first one.
I'm not sure about that, Mr. Warden. I know that water wastewater studies are...
Well, we've just finished our, our development charges, and I think it was something around $6,000 for, for Malahide, so it was, and staff did most of it. Sally?
I can verify that as well with central Elgin. We just finished doing ours a year ago as well, and it was much less. We use the same firm as what we used, and so they already had a handle on everything, and it was just a matter of looking at our costs and, and saying, you know, you probably should up it a little here and there.
Bob?
Yeah, just some clarification. If the county were to impose a development charge across the board, and municipality doesn't have their own development charge, the money collected in our municipality, does that stay in a pool and only get spent in our municipality?
Brian?
The money would go towards funding development across the county. Now, there's a couple of different mechanisms and, and for which council can consider. But generally, it would go to a general account and, and fund development across the county. Jim, I don't know if you wanted to add anything further?
Yeah, there's nothing in the development charge rules that says that specifically in that area, but then I guess it would be at council's discretion as they're looking at projects to make sure those projects are fairly distributed.
So basically, it works the same as the tax base.
Yes.
Any other questions for Brian? Seema? Dominique?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of questions. In the correspondence later on, there is mention of a review of development charges or some aspect of development charges that may be changing. Do we know what is coming, and does that affect the timing of our study?
Brian?
I'm not aware of any proposed changes.
There's a bill in front of the legislature right now, and that is, one of the items that would affect us would be that where you see there's a 90% recovery in a number of areas outside of roads, you're talking about eliminating that 10% discount. So you'd have the ability actually to, to have a higher level of DCs than under the rules that we did up prior. I'm not sure when those obviously will be passed, but they're in the legislature right now.
Sally?
And there was a change that took place about a year ago, where they changed recreation and parks and things like that that we used to be able to, if we had to build a new park, that could go onto development charges. It can't anymore. It's under a separate item. So they have limited it, what it can and cannot be spent on that. Those changes are made about a year ago.
Yeah, there's a number of changes that will affect the, our local municipal partners, but not at the county level.
Right.
Correct, and assuming that the cost of the study is eligible cost?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Dominique.
You just said thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I can't see. Mary, you have your hand up?
No.
No. Okay. Any other questions for Brian? There is a recommendation before you, and the recommendation is proceed with the study. So I will need a mover and seconder. Grant, Martin, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell.
No.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
No.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
No.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Five three, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, the next one. Catherine, you're doing the next, next one, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through Uta County Council. The first report that time delivered today is regarding some administrative updates that we are doing to some of our bylaws that govern the operations of the corporation. So the recommendation for council is to repeal three bylaws, sorry, four bylaws, and then to enact three bylaws to replace those bylaws as a result of organizational changes, new members of the management team are joining us, as well as senior management tournaments that required us to change these bylaws. First set of bylaws we had were in relation to the appointment of a deputy clerk, a deputy treasurer, and then another bylaw that appointed alternates for both of those positions within that bylaw. So the recommendation, based on changes in staffing, reporting relationships, and organizational operations, is to repeal those three bylaws and instead replace them with two. One that just focuses directly on treasury function, so with the deputy treasurer and the alternate contained in one bylaw, and then the deputy clerk, as well as the deputy clerk alternates also contained in another bylaw. So this just reflects some changes in staffing, as well as in the deputy clerk bylaw. We wanted to make our new planner have the powers of the deputy clerk as it pertains to her role under the planning act. So there are certain things, such as standing of teeth, that she needs to have that function. So that's included in that bylaw as well. The second bylaw is also related to, to the new planner, and it's related to the delegation of powers under the planning act. So under section 22 and 51 of the planning act, council delegates certain powers to the manager of planning, such as approvals of plans of subdivision and condominiums and part lot. In that bylaw as well, both there is provisions for alternate for the planner, and currently, that provision was, was given to economic development, to the general manager of economic development, but staff thought it more appropriate to designate that to director of engineering services. Just given the director's familiarity with planning applications that come across his desk, in the event that the planner is not available, it's much more likely that the director of engineering services has already reviewed the document and is familiar with it, and therefore will be better able to approve it. So those are the recommendations. If council has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Questions for Catherine on the, her report? Seeing none, mover and second for the report from Catherine? Moved by Ketchba. Second by Marks, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And you're doing the service delivery review as well, Catherine? Go ahead.
Mr. Warden, again through Uta County Council, the purpose of the report before council is to review the progress to date of the service delivery review for the purposes of public transparency and for communication with our local municipal partners, and also to seek council's approval to circulate the attached document, which is a summary of the process to our local municipal partners and also to the city of St. Thomas. As council knows, the service delivery review is being undertaken through funds through municipal modernization fund, and was originally supposed to be completed by June. However, due to COVID-19 deadlines have been extended to December, and we are well on track to meet those. So this, this document is just to be circulated to our partners to let them know the progress. This, the strategy corp, the consultant, has been undertaking extensive consultations with stakeholders across the county. They have delivered a interim report to council in June and also submitted that to the ministry as well. And we are on track to submit a final report to the ministry in September. So the attached document just talks about the backgrounds, the key priorities of the project, the deliverables so far to date, as well as the timelines moving forward, and also details of high-level opportunities that have come out of the interim report. So I'm just seeking the approval of council to circulate this to our partners to make sure that we are open and transparent and providing adequate communication. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. And certainly, I think it's important that our lower tier be updated on what's going on at the county. So questions for Catherine on the service delivery review? Seeing none, mover and second for her report, please. Moved by Martin. Secondary, Jones, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Catherine. Community safety and well-being. Julie, are you doing this one or Caroline? Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So through Uta County Council, Elgin County, in partnership with the city of St. Thomas, town of Elmer, and police services are working together to develop a joint community safety and well-being plan. This plan will mark a shift in focus from a reactive response-based approach to incidents to a more proactive holistic approach to community safety. Although work on the plan has been delayed and is taking place in a different format than originally anticipated, the behind-the-scenes work on the plan has continued. An introductory video and survey was sent to approximately 118 organizations, and we received 38 responses. The responses, including the service groups represented in those responses, will be discussed at the upcoming coordinating committee meeting on July 23rd. The committee will also discuss next steps and form a strategy for future engagements with the advisory committee. More information about the survey results and next steps will be shared with council following. With that, the recommendation is before you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Caroline. Questions for Caroline on her report?
Ms. Warden? Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications if I could. So I think the initial list that was circulated, if I counted correctly, had 151 organizations. But I think I heard the survey was sent to 118. What was the?
That is correct. So there were some modifications made to that list, and I can send that to you.
And so 38 is fairly low. I mean, everything is dependent on context, and I think in this context, I think 38 is low. This is a really important plan. I don't have to highlight the discussions around community safety and the roles of different organizations and the role of police. So I think these conversations are really, really important. And I understand that the deadlines and the timelines to complete this plan will be extended perhaps by another year. I don't think that's been confirmed yet, but now that we're entering new stages that should allow face-to-face and roundtable, perhaps discussion, I would really like the coordinating committee to consider and reconsider how input will be received. I don't think we're pressed for time, and I think the reach and the proactive reach and the input is way more critical than getting the plan done. So I would like to see that perhaps in the next update.
Through you to Counselor Jager, definitely. Our consultant, Jennifer Kirkham, is aware of the limitations of the survey that we just completed, and we will be discussing that and making a strategy for future engagements.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. Ed?
Just clarifying again, how many did you send out?
A hundred and eighteen.
A hundred and eighteen, you had a thirty-eight response. My research skills may be a little bit dated, but my understanding according to the total design, that falls within the scope of valid statistical analysis. So I have no problem with that.
Mr. Warden, if I may comment on that?
Go ahead, Dominique.
It depends. So there's not a general rule around the statistical significance because we, for example, what we don't have is that in 118, there were different categories of organizations. So for example, what if the 38 organization responded fall in one type that's related to health and safety, but there's nothing related to emergency services? So we don't have enough details to actually determine that 38 is a good saturation and representation point. So that's why I'm thinking we have to be very careful. And I think that in this case, because it's important, it's a very critical at this time. Like I said, when as communities, we're rethinking what is community safety and how we ensure it and enforce it, I think we need to exceed the minimum requirement of a basic statistical study. So those were my two points.
Okay, Sally?
Yes, Mayor French and I sit on that committee, and certainly, we would look with Ms. Kirkham and see, you know, to make sure that no sector didn't respond, that it was certainly covering all aspects. I think that is important. Certainly, I agree with Ed, Mr. Ketchabah anyway, that, you know, a third is considered very high response to most surveys, but I agree, this is a very important survey, and we'll make sure all sectors were covered.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, mover and securer, receive and file, please. Martin and Marks, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jager?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. The environmental committee terms of reference. Julie, you're doing this one?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. As directed, I'm bringing forward an environmental committee terms of reference. This is, of course, part of council's strategic plan and your planning process through which you establish the priority growing Elgin to be the place where people want to live, work, and play. The objective associated with that strategic priority is fostering a healthy environment. And you established, you included establishing an environmental committee with an associated timeline of August 31st, 2020 as part of your action plan to support your strategic plan. So the purpose of this report is to seek your approval for the attached terms of reference and to appoint two members of council to serve on this committee. I will just highlight within the terms of reference that the committee's mandate is to be responsible to county council as serving as an advisory committee, also providing research and information support to the rural initiatives and planning advisory committee, municipal council, and other committees as required, also to the general citizenry to encourage and promote sustainable programs and functions such as waste reduction, reuse and recycle programs, water and energy conservation measures, climate change mitigation, to investigate other aspects of environmental concern that may be suggested by county council and put forward to the committee and/or civic administration, and to initiate and/or receive submissions and/or delegations regarding any environmental concerns, and to report those recommendations to the rural initiatives and planning advisory committee and county council when appropriate. So the objectives are to provide input and comments on policies, procedures, and regulations of the county, including any environmental issues impacting the county. The committee can recommend and advise council on policies that they think should be developed and offer suggestions for the formulation of environmental policies and comment on any policies prepared by staff before it comes to county council. The committee will also review studies, proposals, and any other documents referred to the committee by council, staff, and provide advice regarding their applications, and assist council and staff in identifying research needs and environmental data gaps, formulating strategies for council's consideration. I will just clarify for council's information that when we refer to environmental matters, this means any matters relating to protection and preservation of the natural environment as it pertains to the health and safety, public well-being, and sustainability of Elgin County residents and businesses as it falls within the jurisdiction of Elgin County as set out in the municipal act, the Environmental Protection Act, and all other relevant provincial legislation. And environmental concern means adverse or potentially adverse effects on the health and safety, public well-being, or economic sustainability of Elgin County residents and businesses as it relates to the natural environment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie on her report? Thank you. Mover and securer for receive and file.
And a point.
And a point. Jones? Securder? Martin, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jager?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Strategic plan, you're doing that, Julie?
I have some thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The purpose of this report is to share with council and the community council's proposed 2020 work plan and associated timelines, and this is in support of your strategic planning work that has been ongoing since the fall of 2019. So the information is attached, and this report seeks your approval of your work plan, which supports the strategic plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have as well. I'm sure the warden would as well.
Thank you, Julie. Question for Julie on the progress and the timing? We are moving forward despite the fact that it's a pandemic and we're struggling with it, but we are moving forward. So mover and securer for the report, please.
Purcell.
Ed Purcell, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jager?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, team planning.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. It's our monthly report and update to county council on our COVID-19 response. The information is attached, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But first, I'd like to commend the leadership team for their incredible work navigating this pandemic and the support that they've provided to the corporation. Endless hours, long, long weeks, and I've seen a huge amount of commitment come through our leadership team, and collectively, we have so much to be proud of. So kudos to the team.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie on her report? Sally?
I would just like to echo what Julie said, and thanks to Julie and the whole team, please, because it is, this has been tough. We all know dealing in our own municipalities, how much work it is. So thank you, all of you.
Thank you for those comments, Sally. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, mover and securer for the report, please. Martin and Jones, all in favor?
Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jager?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. The first one's from the town of Renfue. Any questions, comments, anyone wish to endorse? Seeing none on number one, to receive and file. Mover and securer, Ketchabah? Jones, all in favor?
Counselor Purcell? Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Jager?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero.
Thank you. The second item for consideration, Sally, you would want to address this one?
Sure, this is from the police services board. You'll note, as it says in there, traffic accidents due to animals on the road, in particular deer, have increased greatly in this first quarter of the year over the whole of last year. And so we would like to have the county look at, the county engineering department, look at all the deer crossing areas, look at the statistics with the OPP in conjunction with them, and see if, you know, we need some additional signage or improved signage for deer crossing because it is becoming, it can be a very serious accident, and it frequently is. So we just thought with the statistics increasing that we would like to see the county take a good look at this.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Questions, Sally, for the police services board? We've obviously, we've got flashing signs that come out in the fall of the year. Have they done a statistical report on effectiveness of those signs?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think it'd be nice to know with the, obviously, are people aware that this is a crossing and whether they're more vigilant on whether traditionally the deer do cross? And I know that the deer have a habit of crossing the same place every time, and especially in the fall of the year. I know the accidents go up during those areas, but I'm just wondering if we're effective with the signs.
That's a good question, and certainly, I would assume, you know, that that could be looked at very definitely. I know, like, we were surprised because it's in the winter that the accidents went way up.
Oh, not in?
For, not just the fall. So that was our concern. There's just a huge increase this January, February, March as well over last year.
Curious. Tom?
Just wondering if that, can you define the huge increase? Because I remember 10 years ago, when I was on the police services board, and I can remember, because I think we were approaching one accident a day across the county. Sticks my mind, I could be wrong, but I'm wondering what it is today?
Give me a moment, and I'll tell you. Define it.
And is that in the middle, the sort of one area or?
I'd like Grant to go ahead while Sally's looking that up.
Counselor Martin's looking. I know the last two winters have been very mild, and therefore, the deer population has really increased because the mild winters. I guess there's a little more tongue-in-cheek, but I hope Mr. Lima is able to train the deer to go to those crossings.
We have residents who don't watch those signs. I'm crossing here. Mr. Warden, I suspect that intentiveness and speed are more a factor of what's going on. There's a lot more aggressive driving down our way.
And it's probably more the newcomers to the area. I mean, because I travel Summers Corners Road almost every day, and there's one just south of Summers Corners, and the deer are often there, and there's a warning sign. And I've probably more vigilant, but if you're from Toronto, you're probably not aware of that, and a sign might make you slow down and be a little more observant of where they're coming in the ditches.
In the report, just give them.
Okay, Sally.
And it's lots of pages.
Tom?
It's my observation, you know? I'm in the Kettle Creek Valley, and my gosh, there's, you have a farm, you can count two dozen of them on a regular basis. The only thing probably more is the wild turkeys, but you can be, you can drive down that road, and you can have the best intentions, but it's that flash. If they're there, you can be, it's right on your mind, the reaction, they're running. Obviously, it's not that one you see, it's the four or five that are following.
That's right, that's right. I bet that happens.
It's the luck of the draw. I'm sorry, signs aren't going to really help.
And there's no question, I think the deer population has increased, and the more deer there are, the greater the incidence. I have a hunter friend, and I've seen twins, and on a lean year, they'll have none or one, but on a good year, they'll have two. And so it doesn't take very long to really increase the population.
All right. Just trying to find the specific statistics on deer. Animal.
Tom?
This study, is there a cost to it? That'd be another question, other than staff time, is there a cost to this?
Sally's gonna have to ask that question from the police services board. Is there a cost?
Well, we're asking the engineering services to do it.
We were doing it this end, I'm sorry.
No.
I'd like to know that.
We're not.
Brian, do you know if there's an ID on the cost to do that study?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. It would start with a discussion, obviously, with the OPP to see.
That would be the essence of our findings, would be based upon that data, so.
It was on the screen.
Okay. So it would mostly be in-house?
It would be, yeah, it would be a tabletop exercise.
Okay.
It was not in the report that was sent out. Mr. Butler had it on the screen for us and was showing the great increase. I can't say specifically, I don't know.
I recall that it was over 600, but the actual increase I am unable to comment on, but we would be happy to provide that in the follow-up report.
Okay.
It certainly was. You know, it was very, it really jumped out at you.
Anyway, there's been a request from the Police Services Board for an evaluation, and Sally, I'm assuming you're moving this?
I will still move it.
Seconder? Jones, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. There's seven items on correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment or support?
I have the deer collision stats now.
Oh, do you? Okay. Julie's got the deer collision.
Just to go back, I was incorrect, and it's 395.
Is this 2019?
It was last year's report, or last quarter's report, Sally.
Last quarter.
Last quarter's report, 395 deer collision.
Quarter? Wow.
It was significant.
Correspondence, seven items, anything that wants to question, support? No burning issues? Motion, receive and file? Martin, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Other business statements, inquiries by members? Notice a?
I believe, Sally, do you have one about Police Services Board provincial appointee?
Oh, yes, I can certainly report on that. The province, we've been almost a year, in fact, it virtually was last July that Bonnie Vowell was, her term came up, and we've been asking and asking and asking for provincial appointee because our board is only five, and when you're sitting with four, and it doesn't take much to not have a forum. So we've been asking them, and I will say, I worked through Mr. Yurk's office, and he said, no, we're on it, and we did receive now a name. So Dave Jenkins has been appointed to the Ontario, or to the Elgin Police Services Board by the province of Ontario.
That's good news. Good, thank you, Sally. Notice a motion? Matters of urgency. We did have a request to put the flag up next week, and there'll be a proclamation, whereas this is a necessity to actively support lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, two-spirited, queer, and all other sexual orientation and gender identities to be celebrated and supported as full and equal members of our community, and whereas the County of Elgin recognized that diversity is a vital and integral part of the community that is celebrated and strengthens our municipality, we should take pride in our identity and never feel we must hide who we are at work, school, or within our families and communities. And whereas the intent of the pride flag being raised at the County of Elgin Administration Office is to support the Rainbow Community and show the commitment of the community to provide a safe and welcoming place that improves the overall quality of life for all members. We look forward to the County of Elgin and its community's members as being fulfilling their titles as ambassadors and leaders as we strive for equality in Ontario, Canada, and even more broadly in the world. Now, therefore, I, Dave Meldell, hereby proclaim the week of July 20th to July 26th, 2020, as Pride Week in the County of Elgin, and encourage all citizens to take pride in our diversity and celebrate our difference to help make our community a place where it can be all proud to call home. And we will be raising the flag on the 22nd at 11 o'clock. So anyone wish to participate, they're more than welcome. Okay, closed by items, meeting items. So we need session to move into close, and we should have justification for that, I bet I don't see it. Okay. So we need a mover and second that we proceed with the closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239-2. Item one, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose, Elgin Woodlands Conservation Bylaw. And number two, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose, Energy Board proceeding. And as I said before, item three is moved to August meeting. So mover and second to move into close, please. Martin, Marx, favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Do we need a? We need a motion to rise and report, Jones and Marx, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell? Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Recommendations to committee, the whole?
This one is for in-camera item number one.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the report from staff be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Okay. Mover and second for that report. Martin, Ketchba, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number two?
Be it resolved that the report from the county solicitor be received.
Mover and second, Ketchba? Jones, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Bylaws?
Motion to adopt.
Oh, motion, motion to adopt, the committee, the whole, please. Martin, Marx, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Bylaws?
Be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 20-30, being a bylaw to appoint deputy clerks, deputy clerk alternates for the County of Elgin, and to repeal Bylaws Number 9-10 and Number 16-0-6.
Thank you. Mover and second. Second by Jiguer, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next?
Be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 20-31, appointing a deputy treasurer and deputy treasurer alternate, and to repeal Bylaw Number 9-9.
Thank you. Mover and second for that one. Marx? Ketchba, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 20-32, being a bylaw to delegate certain authorities vested in the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin as the approval authority with respect to plans of subdivision, plans of condominium, and part law control bylaws pursuant to Section 22 and 51 of the Planning Act, to the manager of planning for the County of Elgin, and to repeal Bylaw Number 13-28.
Thank you. Mover and second for that report. Jones? And Purcell, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel French?
Yes.
Counsel Jiguer?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 20-33, being a bylaw to amend Bylaw Number 17-12, designating community safety zones on county roads.
Mover and second, please. Second by Jiguer, all in favor?
Counsel Purcell?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.